School Board meeting to order. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Anthony Davis to lead us in the pledge. See, it was a pop quiz for now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Will Cox, awards in recognition.
Good evening. It gives me great pleasure to recognize one of our principals for the second year in a row in Nashville for the William J. and Lucille H. Field Award. Would like to present this to Dr. Adrian Coger. Come on up. Dr. Coger is principal of Antioch High School and has been a Level 5 for two years in a row, is a reward progress school, and she received this award from the University of Tennessee for demonstrating leadership excellence through commitment to the values of civility, candor, courage, social justice, responsibility, compassion, community, persistence, service, and excellence. Dr. Coger embodies all of these. Congratulations.
I'm very honored to be the recipient of the UT Field Award through the University of Tennessee Knoxville, and believe me, I accept this on behalf of all of the students, the faculty, parents, the entire learning community of Antioch High School. So, very honored and thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we're now ready, believe it or not, for public participation. Those of you who have been asked to speak before the board, you have three minutes. We're going to, the clock up here will keep your time. At the end of the three minutes, you will hear this sound. I respectfully ask that you step away from the podium at that time and yield to the next speaker. I'll call you in order of listing here Debbie Korsko, Chris Moth, Roy Wellington, and Christina Hurley. Please come to the podium. Debbie, Chris, Roy, Christina. No Debbie, Chris is next.
Is Debbie here?
There you go. It's all you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Chris Moth. Becky Sharp and I co-chair the Hillsborough Cluster Parent Advisory Council. Dr. Register, your job is thankless and I've been inspired by your determination to keep MMPS moving forward against a lot of resistance from some uninformed pessimists. So, thank you and best wishes in retirement. Dr. Register has repeatedly said that student time spent with quality teachers is key to success. That has to be true, and I thank Dr. Register for working to bring intercession and pre-K to as many children as possible. Our charter school advocates agree. The 2015 Stanford Crado Report studies urban charter school performance. It's funded by the Walton Foundation and takes some troubling shortcuts, but it claims that African-American students gain about a month of instruction in big-city charter schools compared to traditional public schools. We should expect that because of a month of extra instruction is about what charter students get when they are in front of teachers an extra hour a day. Curiously, in the same Crado report, white students lose a month at urban charter schools. In any case, teachers are important, and it's a problem when 20% of substitute requests go unfilled. I've served as a substitute, and I have to say that my best efforts to reach kids in the classroom pale in comparison to what our teaching professionals accomplish every day. I'm in awe of their training, their classroom management, and their relationships with our kids. Becky Sharp has been working with principals in Branfords to help with the unfilled sub-requests. I'm a data junkie, and I noticed in Becky's data that zoned high schools seem to have more absences than our academic magnets. Schools vary in size, so I scaled the absence counts to a uniform school size of around 1,000 students. But even after accounting for school size, our zone schools still show maybe 50% more sub-requests than our magnets. We've asked around to try and understand this. Maybe our zone schools have higher per pupil staffing for special ed or community services. We know Hillsborough has had a high number of maternity leaves, but we don't have a complete explanation for the citywide trend. I'm curious about absence rates at KIPP and LEED charter high schools. Unfortunately, since charters don't record absence data in our comprehensive system, that lack of collaboration hinders our research and comparisons. Please look at the data and the chart I've left you. Whatever is causing the absences, I bet that lowering the rate might bring us a few hundredths of a point in our ACT average. And in this business, every hundredth of a point is a huge victory for Nashville's children. Segregating kids into more magnets and charters won't increase average scores. Let's instead be intentional and refocus on keeping great teachers in front of more kids for more hours every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have seen the advance report of the East Nashville Advisory Committee. They do not propose any changes to the Maplewood Cluster, which could be a choice cluster given many good options. The committee does not recommend any school closures, nor do they have a new purpose for empty classrooms. Their plan is highly compatible with my proposal to create new academic magnets at Graymar Middle School and Maplewood High School. Your Charter Financial Impact Report says it can be expensive to let $9,000 follow a student into a charter school. Empty space is expensive space, no matter how it's created. You would not let an appropriation languish, and you should not let an expensive resource such as a building languish underutilized. The report should have lit a fire under this board to figure out how to put this wasting space back into service. Selection Day gives parents an option to send their students to a choice school. This board chooses to ignore many requests, allowing waitlists to grow long at some magnets. Of seven schools with long waitlists, three are academic magnets, and two more are pathways to academic magnets. Those waitlisted high school students should be earning 1,000 AP credits by graduation, but that is not happening within MMPS. These displaced students are either out of MMPS entirely, or they are not as well-served as they could be. Whatever the injustice for which you have condemned these students, it is past time to lift the sentence and open two more academic magnets. Neglect by this board makes Nashville worse off. Parents are left with tough options. A half-million-dollar house in Brentwood looks cheap compared to private school. A Vanderbilt capstone project on student departure shows a lot of students move out at 5th grade. Look at Williamson County, and you see an elevated number of students who could have been at MEGS. See what it has done for their economy: corporate headquarters, high-end malls, commercial and residential construction. That is less money for our schools. About 30% of MEGS students are farm kids, free and reduced meals, as are 130 on the waitlist. They don't have the Brentwood option, nor the private school option. Nashville is growing, but the school budget seems stuck. We kept Bridgestone only by waiving property taxes for 30 years. End motion 2015 is asking for $7 billion to fix traffic congestion caused by parents who have to commute. That is less money for our schools. I don't get it. Graymar and Maplewood as academic magnets would be consequential without being expensive, would fill up schools rather than emptying and closing them, and would grow the tax base here rather than there, and would give students who are short on options a very good option. Please open Graymar and Maplewood as academic magnets. Thank you for hearing me out.
Good evening, members of the Board and to the City of Nashville, Tennessee. My name is Christina Hurley, and I am currently 4th grade EL educator in the Metro Nashville Public School System. I'm here tonight to introduce to you my school district redesign program. Let's begin briefly with my life experiences. This was my inspiration to my redesign program. I'm a military child, having traveled the world with my family at a very young age, and finally settled in Oshkosh, Wisconsin after my father retired from the United States Army. My schooling was mostly done in the Oshkosh Public School System. Thereafter graduation, I left to serve my country in the United States Air Force. My own world travels began. My son, now of 16 years, is a vast educational experience. He and I both spent time while stationed at Kadina Air Base, Okinawa, Japan, and a Japanese monastery preschool, learning the culture and language. Then my family spent four years in Germany, where my son attended a German kindergarten for two years while I taught at the Brunkassel Kuhls Hauptschule. When he turned five years old, I transferred him to the Department of Defense School System at Spangdahlmer Base, where both the German language and culture were taught in the schools. My formal university education and teaching observation hours happened in both the Dodia and the German school system. My son and I later traveled to Arizona, where he completed the first and second grades. Finally, in 2007, we entered the Tennessee school system. He now attends middle college high school, where in two more years, he will graduate with his high school diploma and his associate's degree in the Physicians Assistant Program. He qualified to attend this school through his TCAP scores and academic progress. However, I was unaware that this type of program existed until we received an invitational mailer. In middle school, my son qualified for higher math, but due to teacher turnover and not enough student qualifiers, he lost those opportunities to excel. My school district redesign program reflects on our world travels and its educational opportunities. As we continue to see a rather large influx of diverse populations moving into Nashville, we need to open our minds to diverse but operational school districts. According to my research and obvious trends, our students will be among the billions that will be competing for jobs worldwide. We need to prepare our students for these opportunities. My redesign program is consistent of a healthy competition and addressing these changes and demands of our modern society. It puts the student in the driver's seat. It puts fun back into school. It prevents stagnation that is currently prevalent in our middle schools. The parents will be knowledgeable of the possibilities for their child without the financial barriers and transportation challenges. The student will become intrinsically motivated and more accountable for their exhibited work ethic. The teacher will teach the curriculum, not teach to the standardized test. Students will qualify, not be judged by a single test score, or having that testing pressure of doing well for their teacher's sake. A highly effective character education program will prevail in our school district. Has anyone ever heard of the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People? The Leader in Me School Program complements this redesign. We will have successful students in our district. Your handout that I'll give to you here briefly outlines the redesign and its features. I would like to be given the opportunity to continue this presentation and effectively answer all of your questions. We have an arc to build.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Ms. Sharp, Sharice Dones, Nina Lockard, and Donna Jones. Ms. Sharp, Sharice Dones, Nina Lockard, and Donna Jones. Go ahead.
Good evening. Hey, everybody. I'm Becky Sharp. I am mother to Tyson, graduate of Hillsborough High School. He's at a gap year in Germany right now. I have a daughter Lily, who's a freshman at Hillsborough, and a son Lucas, who's a sophomore at Hillsborough, and I'm a graduate from Overton High School. Go Bobcats! I'm also co-chair of the Hillsborough Parent Advisory Council with Chris Moth. Tennessee was one of the first states to require all of its students to take the ACT. In 2014, The Tennessean reported that metro schools' average ACT score was at the highest in five years at 18.4. In 2013, Nashville Next report, Candace McQueen, now Education Commissioner, noted that Nashville is beating the state of Tennessee on the ACT. That's great, but I believe we can do much better. How? I'd like you to think about it. Lots of parents, including me, have paid for ACT prep courses, and in Williamson County, ACT prep is integrated into the system, kicking in whenever there's downtime in a classroom. What if we could implement a little more ACT prep in the MMPS at no cost? There's a simple idea. Let's use substitute teaching time and do some ACT prep. Substitute teachers are in front of our children for as much as a tenth of their time in our schools. On average, our high schools have two subs every day, 14 hours of teacher time. The majority of our teachers leave detailed lessons plans, and of course, those teachers' plans are paramount. But even the best subs can't teach for 90 minutes straight. I've tried. The best subs, and I'm not saying I'm one of the best, are the ones everybody wants. They teach for 30 to 45 minutes, and then it's free time, it's babysitting time, it's sitting-be quiet time. Let's make it ACT prep time instead. Another problem I know you're working on but needs much more urgency still is the crisis that only 80% of substitutes' requests are filled. In my business, if my people were gone 20% of the time, we would have a major issue. Nashville is the it city. There are lots of more lucrative ways to spend a day than subbing. Let's figure out how to improve the problem of unfulfilled slots. Could we loop an administrative staff to help bring the focus on this? I believe so. To recap tonight, I'm asking you to do three things. Please make ACT prep a part of substitute training and ensure that every high school classroom is ready to go with worksheets in case a teacher's lesson plan falls short. Work towards having an ACT prep-trained sub in every classroom every day so that a teacher's life interruption does not halt our students' education 20% of the time. Let every Branford administrator and office worker substitute teach for two days each year when slots are unfilled. That will improve our focus on this problem more than anything I can imagine. Most importantly, and I understand you all are doing this, please track these improvements on your dashboards. Set and announce a goal for December. Target a 95% fill rate for substitute requests and ensure 100% of all returning substitutes complete 30 minutes of online ACT prep study this summer. The district is already working on an ACT prep curriculum that's available. Working together, I'm sure we can change this crisis.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Sharice Dones, Nina Lockard, and Donna Jones.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sharice Dones. Thanks to the Board for allowing me to speak today. I am so excited to be here today, and it is an honor to be able to speak about an outstanding school. My daughter has been at Purpose Prep since it started and is now in the 1st grade. My son will start kindergarten at Purpose Prep in the fall. My daughter was always a child that was eager to learn more, and we wanted her educational experience exciting, and I think one of her favorite moments so far was getting a tour of the TSU campus. I love the way the school requires the scholars to do a life-work package during the summer to get them prepared and keep their minds focused. My daughter has learned so much since being at Purpose Prep. When she was in kindergarten, she was reading and writing, detailed stories really well. Now she is reading chapter books. The curriculum goes beyond what another school would offer and allows the kids to go beyond their grade level. My grandmother, a retired English teacher, along with my grandfather, visited Purpose Prep Academy not long ago. She said the students were being introduced to subject matters that her students were learning in high school. My husband and I are strongly impressed, and we are sure other parents are too, with the manner in which the school involves the parents in the learning process. They have university nights that the parents are required to attend, where the parents learn about writing and math skills that the scholars are working on. I love the fact that the parents have to attend a conference to get report cards. With the conference, the parents actually know what is happening with the students' grades and how they can make any improvements. When parents are involved, it helps the parent, student, and teacher stay on the same page. Purpose Prep has a great staff. Ms. Legar Newman, the head of the school, along with a competent staff, is very friendly and genuinely care about the children and make sure they are on their best behavior. They even greet the children with a handshake every morning and make sure they make eye contact, which builds self-esteem. The parents can also directly contact the teachers on their personal phone if needed or reach them via email. And thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Donna Jones. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this afternoon. Ms. Dones kind of summed up everything it is about Purpose Prep that we love. I just want to say, as a grandmother who is doing my second tour of duty to raise grandchildren at the age of 61, no one I know wants to do that, but when God calls you to that charge, you have to make sure that they are getting the best of care. It was with that that an envelope arrived at my home one afternoon that said, "Open." This could be the start of something wonderful, and it was about a charter school. I knew absolutely nothing about charter school. I was one of those persons that was raised up in public school, at Moses McKissick Elementary School, Washington Junior High, Pearl High, and North High School. But I did open that envelope, and what it gave us was wonderful. It allowed us all the possibilities that my children could possibly dream of. Within 30 days, well, let me first start with what Ms. Newman, Legar Newman, the head of school, did to us as parents when we arrived for orientation. She instills in all of us, starting with parents first. She wants us to know that it does start with us, not just our kids, that we have to be invested as well. And she said to arrive at 8:00 AM. I, who's normally never on time that day, actually was there on time. And at 8:00, Ms. Newman politely closed the door, and those parents that were not there at 8:00 were actually locked out. This was to teach us all a lesson, so we could teach our children to be on time, to be aware, to do the things that they need to do. Within 30 days that Rachel, my oldest granddaughter that I'm raising, who is now seven years old, started kindergarten, one of the founders of Purpose Prep Scholars, we were in the supermarket, and we were going through the magazine aisle, and she told her sister Danielle, she said, "Danielle, Justin Bieber is in jail." So she was actually able to read all the headlines. I was astonished. I was like, I thought they were just doing sight words, but she was already reading at 3rd grade level. So, I can't speak for other charter schools. I can only speak for the school that I know, and it has given us so much hope for tomorrow in my household. Legar Newman and her staff have done an incredible job with our children. They take care of them, all their needs. They make sure that all of the parents, as Ms. Dones says, are there for them in every step and every aspect of schools. So I would say, for this particular charter school, they have a formula that actually works.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Campbell, then Dr. Jenner for S, and Janice Turner.
Good evening, Board, and thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the charter school system. Like myself, Ms. Lockard and Ms. Jones, my son also attends Purpose Prep. But I'm not going to speak directly about Purpose Prep. I'm going to talk mainly about the fact I had a choice, and that was important. I am a native Nashvillian, went to schools here. I'm a businesswoman, but most importantly, the hat that I wear mostly and proud of is that I'm a parent, which is very important, and the choices we have with the school options. First, when we started school, I thought that we were ahead of the game because I made the investment in my child. I put him in private schools. But things changed, so I had to look at other options where kindergarten. So thankfully, a friend introduced me to this particular school, okay? So with that in mind, what I have to say about the school in general is through one word. It's been phenomenal, from their organized, no-nonsense operations to their educational platform, their reinforced homework and reading assignments, to the structured environment and the respected environment. They do demonstrate and show that it's success, and that will be the end result, that they will be successful. I had the opportunity, my son, right before the holidays, was around a educator, a decorated educator, 30 years, not in this state, in another state, but decorated and awarded, and had the opportunity to spend an extended period of time with this educator. And at the end of the period, one thing she said to me that I was very proud of with that choice is that my son was the smartest child that she knew, being that she's been in this industry for 30 years. So that made me happy that the choice that I made was one that will follow him for the rest of his life. So, thank you very much for this time, and thanks.
Dr. S, Janice Turner, Maria Juarez, and Elizabeth Lyons Drake.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jennifer S. I'm a pediatrician at Mahary, but I'm also a parent with two girls in MMPS. We moved to Nashville in 2006 with our three and five-year-olds. We bought a house near Glendale, thinking that immersion education would provide our girls with many benefits. At that time, immersion was to continue after Glendale in grades 5 and 6 at JT Moore. We were asked to contribute money to help pay for Spanish textbooks. Standards began to emerge for Spanish proficiency at each grade level. I did not hear much discussion about how they could progress with Spanish into high school. Our youngest daughter is now a 7th grader at JT Moore. A lot has changed since 2006. She and her cohorts are thriving. They are now an advanced Spanish 1 with remarkable Spanish proficiency. The progress of this group has been made possible with wonderful help and support from teachers, parents, and principals. But honestly, there have been some glitches along the way, especially since at JT Moore. I have a wonderful cohort of parents with whom I have collaborated over these past several years. We decided that rather than supporting teachers and administration and putting out fires, perhaps we could do more good if we worked to help establish a Spanish continuum pathway more formally. We wanted something to tell incoming kindergarten parents about what their children could hope to accomplish by the time they graduated from Hillsborough upon entering Glendale in regards to their Spanish skills. In this way, it would be easier to maintain what is good about the program and instead focus on making improvements. We formed a committee called the Hillsborough Cluster Spanish Continuation Committee this school year. This group is made up of parents and teachers from all three schools, Glendale, JT Moore, and Hillsborough. We've met several times, creating a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, which we are presenting tonight. The document outlines the 13-year curriculum as it currently exists. We believe that this is already a successful program and can only strengthen the cluster in MMPS. We hope this will provide more continuity between the schools and foster a stronger connection between them. We hope many more families, regardless of what they choose, will see this as a wonderful option for their children. We hope this program can be a model to be copied in some form throughout MMPS. In Glendale, the students are taught Spanish in math and science, and that's 49% of their day, and then many cultural things are brought in. When they come to JT Moore in 5th and 6th grades, they do an early morning Spanish during the zero hour before they start their regular school day. JT Moore, being an international baccalaureate world school, emphasizes the importance of learning a world language and the continuities that is necessary to achieve fluency by making world language the only subject area that must be continually studied in all baccalaureate programs. The primary focus of the early morning classes...
Thank you, Dr. S. If there's any handouts you want to leave with us, or something you want us to make copies of, we'll take it. Dr. I mean, Janice Turner, Maria Juarez, Elizabeth Lyons.
Hello, my name is Janice Turner. I currently have two daughters in 7th grade at JT Moore. Everyone involved in MMPS wants strong school clusters in which families of all ages are proud of their schools and know that there is a place for their child in those schools. More specifically, parents of students in MMPS want to know that the education for their children is part of a well-considered plan, connecting the elementary school to the middle school to the high school. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Glendale, Moore, and Hillsborough Spanish Continuum Agreement. The agreement documents the need for a formal Spanish-language pathway from Glendale through Moore to Hillsborough for the Spanish immersion students at Glendale. We are asking for a formal, realized pathway in order to create stability for the immersion students and their families. We are also asking for a specific point person at MMPS to oversee the pathway, ensuring that the teachers and fundings for those classes are in place each year at the start of the school year. Glendale is an excellent school, however, without a set pathway to continue the Spanish-language learning past the wonderful base provided by it, the parents of the Glendale students are left wondering each year what, if anything, is next. In the document, you will see that JT Moore has worked to create a curriculum of Spanish-language classes for the Glendale students, including an early morning Spanish immersion conversation class for 5th and 6th graders, as well as advanced high school Spanish 1 and 2 for 7th and 8th graders. However, at the start of each year, there's a massive scramble to find teachers and funding for the early morning classes. Generally, nothing is settled until the start of the second nine weeks, and this is despite an enormous effort on the part of Dr. Hughes, numerous parents, and current and former teachers contacting everyone they can think of, from Vanderbilt, Belmont, Lipscomb, and Moore. You may ask why these classes and this pathway is important. Glendale students work extra hard at Glendale, learning their math and science and Spanish. Such effort creates dedicated students and dedicated parents. Those dedicated parents tend to be involved parents, and that is evident by the large percentage of volunteer roles taken on by the Glendale parents at our cluster schools. These are families that MMPS should want to keep, not just in elementary school, but through middle school at JT Moore and high school at Hillsborough. Creating a pathway of Spanish-language learning from Glendale to JT Moore to Hillsborough creates a continuity of learning for the students, something that those elementary school parents can look to see how far their children can go, that known pathway that keeps those families in our cluster. MMPS did a wonderful thing by creating a Spanish immersion elementary, and Glendale is flourishing, as are its students. However, through the present time, there's been no set formal plan for what to do with these wonderful Spanish immersion students once they leave Glendale. Each year has been a scramble, and we have been very lucky and very grateful for the continued commitment Dr. Hughes has given to our students to continue their Spanish. However, this cannot rest on just one person. It needs to be more permanent. Glendale parents and JT Moore parents...
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Maria Juarez, Elizabeth Lyons Drake. Going once, going twice. What's your name?
What did you...
What's your name?
Liz Lyons-Dreyk.
Okay, let's go.
Okay. My name is Elizabeth Lyons-Dreyk, and I live in District 5. My son, Javon Lyons, is a kindergartner at Rocketship Nashville Northeast. This year was my first year as a metro school parent, and I've had a lot of ups and downs, but I'm thankful for them. Because Metro Nashville Public School System allows parents a variety of schools to choose from, I was able to place my son mid-year at Rocketship Nashville Northeast Elementary, a new charter in my area. I was skeptical at first because I knew very little about what charter schools were, but what I did know is I had a kindergartner who I actually began to think was possessed because every day he came home with a behavior problem that I'd never seen before. I felt hopeless and was planning to move out of county when I received a call that my son was no longer on the waitlist at Rocketship. When my son started, he was at a pre-K reading level, which was disappointing because I had been previously told that he was excelling at the old school that he was attending. But because of the teachers and staff, he is now at a first-grade level in both reading and math. I hope that other schools can learn from what Rocketship and other charter schools in the area are doing. And I know the school is committed to continuing to implement what is best for our children. I love Rocketship, and thank you, School Board, for showing me and my family that you care about my child and the children in our community and want them to excel. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Juarez.
Hi, my name is Nina Lockard, and I want to speak on behalf of the charter school.
Is Maria Juarez here? No? Okay.
Yes, my name is Nina Lockard, and I have a kindergarten at Purpose Prep. And I was coming on behalf of Purpose Prep to talk about it, but also to talk about the education within Metro Nashville schools. I have a son currently that is 10-years-old that's getting ready to go to Rose Park. And so when I was making the choice to send Jeremiah to a public school, I chose a charter school. Purpose Prep came over to visit this current preschool that my son was attending. And when I came over to do a visit, I was impressed with not only the students and the teacher ratio, but I was also impressed with what my son was learning. During this year, I have seen him excel past other peers that are in other schools, and I've seen the success that he has, along with self-determination to push forward. Coming from an educated family, as well as being brought up in Metro Nashville schools, I understand the importance of education and working with youth now in a current facility that are considered troubled youth. I know how important it is to set the groundwork and the foundation. So I want to say, based on Purpose Prep has provided that, has shown integrity and showed my child that not only education starts day one, but to continue to where he can have a brighter future and no colleges in his realm. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next, we'll have Councilman Davis speaking on the East Nashville Advisory Committee Pathway Recommendation.
Thank you so much for having me here. I appreciate it, and thanks for, the Board, for allowing me to go a little bit earlier on your agenda, have another meeting this evening, and really appreciate that. Wanted to recognize a couple people. First, Jerice Edens, who couldn't be here this evening, is my co-chair on this East Nashville Advisory Committee. She sent her regards. She couldn't be here this evening, but she and the rest of the committee worked really hard. We've all been working hard, a lot of meetings Wednesday nights, all through the winter. And so definitely wanted to recognize Jerice as my co-chair, and John Gregory, I believe, was the only member that was able to make it this evening. Johnny here in the back there, so wanted to recognize John Gregory for being here tonight. So, just first, a little bit about how we got here. Of course, you guys know East Nashville. We had a lot of schools on the bottom 5 and 25% list in the state. We had sort of, you know, the big announcement from Dr. Register, all kinds of stuff going on in East Nashville, a lot of conversations. The community really wanted to be involved and have input in what was going to happen to our schools, and how we were going to use our buildings and assets, and, you know, what we were going to do with our schools. So, that's why we formed the committee after, you know, at one community meeting, I think things got a little bit crazy in East Nashville. So, we recognized that, and we said, hey, let's get this conversation going in the right direction. Let's be productive. And the district worked with us and allowed us to form this committee, and we really appreciate that. And I think we've put some good work in, had some productive dialogue. We vented a little bit. We got everything out there that we needed to in the committee, and I think we got productive conversation moving forward. So, that was the goal, and I do believe that that happened. You should have them in front of you. If you need a printed copy, we did have some, but I think you have them all electronically as well. I just wanted to kind of plow through the recommendations and then, you know, certainly take any questions. For pathway-specific things, we also have Chris Weber on hand. If you really wanted to get deep into some pathway discussions, we may need an expert, but I'm here to answer any questions as far as the committee's work. So first, you know, the three different buckets of recommendations we had, I think Pathways has gotten obviously the most attention, but Pathways was number one, turnaround and academic strategy recommendations, and then some recommendations for community engagement moving forward, how our community can be engaged in East Nashville. So, we understand Pathways is kind of the bigger thing, obviously, that bigger changes. So, you know, it gets more of the attention, but we do have three different sort of sectors of recommendations. So I'll start with the Pathways. First, with Maplewood Cluster, as was, I believe, mentioned earlier, we did not recommend a lot of changes there. We said the need for K-12 program alignment. Consider Maplewood being a project-based learning cluster. We did want to revisit Maplewood maybe within a year through the PAC meetings, which you'll hear later is sort of the follow-up to the committee. So maybe revisit it later, but we weren't making any significant changes there. The Stratford Cluster and East Cluster is where we had the bigger pathway recommendations for change. First, in the Stratford Cluster with Inglewood, we know Inglewood was the possibility of that KIP conversion. I represent Inglewood. I'm the council member for Inglewood, and the community definitely said no, and they did not want that. So we know that was recommended for Kirkpatrick, but what we wanted to see happen at Inglewood with parent surveys, we had an Inglewood PTO person on the committee, was to continue work with parents, bring a STEM or STEAM program there, and maintain that feeder path that we've got going into Litten Middle School. So that's what we recommended for Inglewood. With Bailey, the bigger changes kind of start there. Move the middle school of Bailey into Stratford High School. Merging the two STEM programs into a 5-12 grade configuration. We would keep the middle school completely separate, almost like East, how it's in a separate building, but within the walls and confines of Stratford. Special care will be taken to maintain the high-performing teachers currently at Bailey. There was definitely a desire of the community to bring what's working at Bailey over with it, you know? Obviously, we've been chronically underperforming at Bailey. We understand that. And so, to those of us, you know, sort of, we thought this would be an innovative way, maybe to spark something there, possibly move it into Stratford, see if we could get something going. We've just been chronically on the 5% list, the bottom 5%, so significant change there. Rosebank, add the STEM program and feed directly into the STEM middle, which we would be moving to Stratford. Kirkpatrick, as I mentioned, convert to the CHIPS KIP charter school, excuse me, and a feeder into KIP Middle School. They would still be zoned for a zone school if they chose not to continue on the KIP pathway, zoned into that Stratford program. And then Warner, another big change that I think is really positive for East Nashville is another guaranteed feeder into East. We suggested having the PIDEA program at Warner. And in addition to Lachlan, we would have another feeder, automatic feeder into East. The definite desire of the community to have more seats at East. So that is for sure. We did not go as far as increasing quotas and percentages, but we kind of ran the numbers. One, expanding, we're going to have more seats. Two, Warner pathway, we're going to have more East Nashville kids at East. So, and, you know, the expansion could be looked at later as well, but that's what we're recommending as of this moment. East PIDEA, so as I've mentioned, the East Middle School, moving the middle school of East to the Bailey Building and expanding the capacity, and then expanding the capacity at East High School in the current campus. There were concerns at our East Community Meeting, and I felt like the district did a good job answering those as far as providing a transportation, if, just for one drop-off, we heard a lot about one drop-off, one drop-off, if you have kids in middle school and high school, providing that shuttle over to the other campus. So we thought the district did a good job responding to that and providing a resource, and then also working with MTA as well. And then the other big community concern that I recall was kind of losing the vibe, losing the small school, you know, we're going to expand like crazy. So, you know, I feel like the district came back and said, we can really roll this out slowly. We can expand slowly. We don't have to pack these buildings right away. And so I felt like, and the committee felt like that answered those concerns as well, that we could just kind of take this one step at a time. We mentioned before Warner adding the PIDEA pathway into East, and then Lachlan continuing the pathway, strengthening that, and adding transportation from Casey to Lachlan. That had been on the table early on in our discussions, you know, giving the Casey kids an option to go to Lachlan Elementary. And then no other new schools in East Nashville. This kind of popped up, seemed logical, but we want the resources going into the schools we have and the assets we have, and no matter what type, no other new schools in East Nashville, let's put our resources into what we have and improve them. Second bucket, turnaround and academic strategy recommendations. Obviously, leadership was number one here, and I'll just kind of plow through these without reading them to you, but ensure we have the right leader at every school in the bottom 5 and 25%. I think the district has started some of these, you know, we weren't going to get in the business of the schools and recommend who should be leading and that sort of thing, but, you know, trusting the district to make sure we have the right leaders moving forward, especially in our bottom 5 and 25% schools. Related to that, give them the autonomy. It's something you guys have been talking about. You know, I'll leave it to the Board. What does that mean, the autonomy and accountability of these leaders in those schools? But let them run their school, whatever that means, whatever you guys decide that means. Give them the autonomy to run their school. They know what they need. Give them the ability to remove ineffective teachers from the classroom faster. We know that's kind of a complicated thing, but if we do have bad teachers, which most of our teachers are good, and they've been beat up a lot lately by the state government, so I'm not beating up teachers here, but if we have a bad apple, we want the school leader to be able to remove them. Create the culture of winning in every school. Again, more on the staffing of each school. The leader of each school knows what they need. Give them the autonomy to make those staffing decisions, if it's assistant principals, if it's a literacy coach, whatever those staffing needs are. Just a casual observation, I feel like we've done that some. I feel like if we trust our leaders in certain schools, we've rolled out more autonomy like that. We need to make sure we have that right leader, especially at these 5 and 25% schools, and then we need to go ahead and do that. So, however, we need to get there quicker, let's do it. We are recommending the turnaround plans that the district has already done, of course, implement those swiftly. Weighted student funding, I know this is kind of a new topic. You guys are going to be bringing that to the council with this budget. We're on board with that, with a little bit, we were able to learn and kind of glom from MMPS. We're all for that, and we think we need that. Effective use of data, this, we definitely discussed this a lot. We see this in the charter schools, just having our schools a little more attentive inside the building to the data that they have, you know? I don't know if it's simple things like more reporting and posting on the walls and those kinds of things, but if it's visiting high-performing schools and saying, what are you doing with your data that we're not doing here, you know, some collaboration in that regard. High performing, whether it's a charter school, or whether it's Dan Mills, or whoever it is that's high performing, visiting those schools and saying, what can we be doing with our data within the walls here to continue improvement? And then additional instruction time, if we can, you know, we understand that takes money. We wanted to see the cost for bottom 5 and 25% schools. What is it going to take if we need a little bit of additional instruction time? Let's do that. Any enhanced option, we wanted them to remain, enhanced option, that sort of thing, whatever we need to turn it around. So, those were kind of our academic recommendations. And then the community recommendations, identify leaders for all those bottom 5 and 25% schools and do parent leadership training. We learned something, we learned a lot about some of the programs that we have here that, you know, we don't know if they're being implemented or not, but we, you know, we definitely want to make sure we're purposely implementing those, especially at these schools. So for all East Cluster schools, immediately implement the Parent University Program. MMPS has a strengthening PTO processes and best practices. We want to make sure we're implementing those, going ahead and rolling those out. We discussed wraparound services a lot. We know you guys are coming with Community Achieves, and I believe it's a staff person funded in all those bottom 5% schools. We wanted to see the numbers of bottom 5 and 25% schools, making sure we have Community Achieves, making sure we have it staffed and whatever it is we need to be able to say, that's not a concern anymore. We have those services. We're offering those in these schools. Better connecting the middle school principals to the two corresponding elementary schools. You know, examples were thrown out, you know, this middle school's really connected to this elementary, but maybe not as much the other elementary in that cluster. Maybe it's a little further away, one's further away than the other, and, you know, we just wanted to recommend that they're connected in every way possible, however we need to facilitate that. Continuing the dialogue of our committee, we wanted to plug into the PAC meetings once a month, possibly with our committee at least joining back maybe once a quarter, however often we could, or have, you know, certain microcommittee from our advisory committee show up at the PAC meetings. A lot of us are engaged in the groups. My co-chair, Jerice, is heavily involved in the Stratford PAC Committee. And then implement the changes with a zero-default contact system, and then do periodic parent and community surveys, and make sure what we're doing is correct. Now, as far as like the rollout, you know, the pathway changes obviously are a year from fall. That's a bigger thing that, you know, you can't just obviously do right away. So, that would roll out a year from fall. We wanted to recommend changes that can happen immediately, academic and the community stuff obviously, to happen immediately. So, as soon as we can roll things out and bring them into the budget, that was our timeline on that. So, you've got, I think, another document that outlines the pathway stuff a little deeper, and enrollment, and if you do have questions for Chris, he can hit you with the enrollment numbers and all that kind of stuff. He was really great to work with in our committee as far as helping download that information to us and helping us understand, you know, where we have under enrollment, where we're full and maxed out, and our options. So, those are our recommendations, and I'd love to take questions, hear comments from you, and I kind of went through that fast, but definitely want to, it's a lot to digest, but again, we feel like we put a lot of work into it. The district was great to collaborate with, and, you know, we think, we know we need to make some changes. We know we do have those underperforming schools, and we just want, we just want success for all our students in East Nashville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Miss Bering.
Thank you, Anthony. I know you've done a lot of work and really showed great leadership in working with the committee, and I appreciate that, and also appreciate the work of the committee. I attended several of the meetings, and it seemed like the ones that were the, had the most contention were the moving of the Bailey School to Stratford and moving east, part of east, to the Bailey Building. And I know several people have had concerns about having Stratford with 5 through 12 in one school, and, but I understand that would be two schools within, under one roof. Now, my question is, if it's two schools under one roof, would it be one principal or two principals?
That's a good question. You know, we certainly would count on the district to, you know, have the implementation plan of that. We kind of were calling it a school within a school. It is one building, and I guess it would be the Stratford STEM Academy, would be a 5-12 school. My vision of it was, yeah, there would be like an overall school leader, and then maybe a middle school leader. I guess there would be a high school, an overall leader, and a middle school leader. I don't know, though. I'm not exactly sure that would be done, that would sort of be planned out in the year that we have, how they would roll that out. That's what I understood from the district. Yeah, so...
How would the committee feel about waiting until the new director is appointed or elected through this body? That would be in another six weeks. Does the committee have a sense, or do you have a sense of what you or the committee would, how you would respond to that?
You know, I don't necessarily want to speak for everyone without, you know, having a meeting and asking that very question. You know, I feel like we did deliberate on this for a long while, you know, this, do we know it's the best plan we could possibly have? No, we're not sure. Were we trusting the experts that do this every day that we're working with? Yeah. I mean, you know, we're all day job people, you know, some of us work in education. education, we had some teachers, and we had certainly education folks, but we had people that, you know, we don't necessarily know every decision that we should make as far as, you know, school level decisions. So I don't know if I can totally answer that. I mean, you know, you'd have to ask the whole committee. I mean, my sense is, I feel like we did reach a good consensus. There are certainly concerns with what I call the BHAG of it, is that the biggest changes, the biggest, largest thing is the Bailey and the Stratford east change. So, you know, I don't, I don't think, I don't know that we would, we could probably meet all over again and have another 20 different ideas, you know, but these are the ideas that ended up coming out of the committee. So, you know, I'm comfortable with them, but, you know, you'd have to ask the whole committee, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis, and I can tell that a lot of thought and angst was poured into this report. So do you have, does your, does this committee have a certain meeting schedule that you have, like a meeting once a month, or have you put that in writing? Is that in?
For future meetings? No, we, again, the PAC meetings are once a month, I believe. And so the discussion we intend to live on in the PAC meetings, we are, I guess we would technically be dissolved as a formal committee, but the intention was to maybe go to the PAC meetings quarterly, at least committee members. And as many committee members that can be involved in the PAC meetings regularly, we certainly want and encourage that, but we want the discussion to live on in the PAC meetings. And there was, in the last meeting or two, there was discussion of, maybe we should even get a small group of us together formally, you know, every quarter. So I'm open to that, it's just we didn't really formalize it.
Okay, well, I think it's important that it does live on in the PAC meetings, but, and to your point, I think it would probably be beneficial to have a certain representation from this group, you know, at the PAC meetings, just to make sure that everything is, you know, going on as scheduled. And to Ms. Spearing's point, you know, I know that Dr. Rager and his staff had a lot of great, good ideas and good input into this, and so maybe, you know, one more input might be a new director, and he might, he or she might have, you know, something else that they might want to add. So I'm, let's just throwing that out for food for thought.
Yeah, absolutely. And, yeah, we'd be okay with that.
I just want to, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Davis, I just want to clarify what the agenda item is here, is approval of the East Nashville Advisory Committee pathway recommendation. So this is on our agenda for a vote. So let me take a step back and help reframe the conversation here, and I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we delay the approval of the pathways pending some additional conversations with management and some additional analysis internally.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Kim?
Well, first of all, thank you, Anthony, for all your service. That was a lot of meetings for you and the committee, and having attended a number of those and witnessed it unfold and all the various contours that the conversation took, I know that was a big lift on your part, so thank you. And I mean, I have to say, I'm really, you know, you're not giving yourself enough credit. You're saying, well, you know, it's a few educators, it's a few day jobbers. I mean, actually, there's a ton of educators sitting at the table from the priority schools, Inglewood, Bailey, Jerry Baxter, who am I leaving out? I feel like I'm leaving somebody else out. Is that it?
Warner, yeah.
Kirkpatrick, Warner. So there are tons of educators actually sitting at the table, and then, like you called yourself a day jobber, and then folks who are just interested in education. And I have to say that the academic strategy recommendations, it's actually remarkable, really, in my opinion, how on point these are. I think they're really smart recommendations. They reflect, I think, the composition of the group, which are long-term educators who are working in some of our most challenged schools and are telling us, this is what we should be doing. I mean, it's interesting, and I think they're smart. They're, yeah, in terms of autonomy, accountability, data-driven, culture of winning, I mean, it's like touched on all the key issues. And then also the community engagement recommendations, I wasn't surprised to see all this come out too, given it's a really engaged group of diverse community members in East Nashville who are making these recs, so I really appreciated all that as well. So the, I like the idea that was thrown out of trying to continue, I remember at the last meeting in particular, there was the idea of should we reconvene the group, if nothing else, to sort of, you know, make sure that we're living these out. So I would like to underscore that, I think that's a smart idea. In terms of the, yeah, so I just want to get all that out there in terms of kudos. I know that, in terms of this motion, I'm not quite sure, yeah, I wasn't expecting that. My thought is that ideally, I see no reason to delay two and three, buckets two and three in particular. I would imagine that, I mean, they're so rooted in what our educators are saying and our community is saying that they want. And it was a collaborative effort, there was lots of energy and time already put into this over multiple meetings. And so I feel a little bit like we might be slapping them in the face to say, well, actually, thank you, but no, thank you, let's delay. So I want to be mindful of that, like that was a very large group of individuals, 25 maybe, who are quite informed about what's happening in East Nashville. And I know that, yes, the most controversy was, and there's lots of energy too, since it's happening right in my backyard around the pathways, creating like very clear pathways that people have clarity and confidence about where their kids are going to go. So I know the energy is there for the pathway, which is why it's number one. I know that there was some stickiness around the actual moves being made on the pathways in terms of moving Bailey, our kids at Bailey, to Stratford, moving east middle to the Bailey Building, et cetera. But, yeah, I just want to affirm the work that you all did and the enormous amount of time and energy that was put into this from a very diverse group of educators and community
Mr. Pinkston.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Davis, thank you for all the hard work that you guys put into it. I think that, you know, going back to the beginning, this sort of unfortunate false start around the so-called all-choice zone, even though it was messy at the time, I think yielded a really interesting set of collaborative conversations. So applaud everybody who was around the table there. My purpose in asking for a little bit of a delay here is, we only received the committee recommendations yesterday, and the item on the agenda really only addresses a subset of the recommendations. So I'd like to see the next conversation in the boardroom be not just approving pathways, but rather accepting the East Nashville Advisory Committee recommendations after we've had a chance to process those. We have been hearing as recently as a couple of hours a day, a couple of hours ago from at least one member of the committee who is still, has some serious concerns about the Bailey proposal. So I think that, you know, on its own warrants just a little bit of additional conversations before we go forward. So I just wanted to explain the thinking behind the motion, and thank Councilwoman Davis again and the committee for all your hard work. Well done.
Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Pierce.
Thank you again. It's evident how hard you've worked, and I do think the question will remain whether it's delayed or approved tonight, just the support that will be given to Bailey, and if next year is, it's last year. And so I know that I have been hearing that concern, whether it's staffing needs and just the support those students will have. So I think my question right now on this motion is, I don't know who I'm supposed to ask, how will that affect this? Will this leave them in even more limbo? Or, you know, I want to be cognizant of that, will a delay make the Bailey situation worse?
So let me ask, I guess, so Chris, or is this going to have, I think to clarify your question, impact on any decisions parents need to make on a current timeline, any deadlines that it's going to impact? What are we holding up, potentially holding up by deferring the committee's work?
The specific changes around the actual pathways is for a year out. And so the idea of approving these changes is to give time for the actual implementation and the design. There are a lot of tough questions around leadership. There's construction projects taking place at Stratford High School currently. Those projects can't be delayed, they need to continue. If the middle school is going to be located there, we need to modify, we've already done work to modify those construction plans, but those are like underway now. And so there's a lot of need to have closure to move forward with if Bailey will be there to give a full year to plan and implement. As far as the specific question about the families and their choices, what we typically ask for is an approval is a year in, a year in advance, so that we can communicate with those families. So if this change is approved, the actual targeted outreach would probably not begin until this fall. So the actual students in Bailey in any of these affected schools would be directly communicated with prior to any of the school choice processes, beginning to notify them a year in advance, you know, of what will take place the next year, and provide them the most flexibility in their options.
One thing came to mind that while all this was being discussed, Dr. Steele and Dr. Sawyer, the one thing I remember them saying was just some kind of certainty. They do want to know, are we doing this thing or not doing this thing? So that was, that was a comment that was made by them, by both of them. And so, you know, just the idea of certainty, it doesn't have to be right this moment, but we are kind of looking to see if we're going that direction or not at some point here in the near future, so.
So I just, I'm going to say two things. Number one is that there's a graduation that I'm supposed to be at, but I just want to also remind us, and obviously parliamentary procedure allows us to make whatever motion that you're comfortable with, so that it's not a criticism of anything. But I do want to just point out a couple of things, this is for our television viewing audience, that we put this committee in place to do exactly what they've done. And the other thing is that I do believe, if I'm not mistaken, that we've been given notice of every committee meeting, East Nashville, because as you've mentioned, you've attended, you've attended, and others have gone. To be there, be a part of that process, so that where the work is occurring, and which is what I try to encourage this body and other bodies as well, that's why we have committees, so that the work can occur outside of the business meeting and the decisions made here, that we've had ample opportunity, myself included, to actually attend those committee meetings while the sausage was being made, to vet and ask any questions and get any concerns that we may have had raised. I know I did not take advantage of it, I'll be honest with that, but I just want to make sure we kind of level set what's going on here, that those opportunities to have those questions asked were definitely made available to the board. Anyone else? Any more?
Yeah, just one more. Just to double click on your point, Anthony, I'm thinking of that last meeting where it was so clear that the school leaders, Christian, who I think is here, Michael Steele, and Ms. Hasford, yes, a lot is at stake in terms of the various changes that need to happen. I know they were feeling the pressure of like, let's go, like, we have a lot to do, and we want a decision to be made, and Christian is nodding, yes, I can still picture you all making it very clear that you wanted to move, so I don't know if you want to say.
I want to echo the thanks to the East Nashville community. I know that incredible amounts of time and energy and passion were a part of this proposal. We are all seeking a sense of world-class excellence for the children of East Nashville. And so the long-term possibilities in this plan are very promising. Ohio, they've built the National Inventors Hall of Fame School, which is a 512, I believe 512, maybe 612 campus. That lends some very promising opportunities that we could build together. My point has been from the beginning, the short-term implications are very important to give very purposeful and intentional attention to, because there are irrefutable practices that are effective at Bailey, that have moved the school from a target store, the target school, excuse me, historically on the academic performance framework, to now a satisfactory school. So turnaround actions are gaining momentum at Bailey. And those are tied instrumentally to the educators in the building, the teachers who have built the change. And so I do advocate for very strategic communications at this point, so that the educators involved, the families and children involved can have a clear sense forward. I mean, when you get into the groundwork of this, we're looking at how we can keep the human talent involved and moving forward with this change. I mean, we have some of Tennessee's top teachers at Bailey now, that we fought hard to get involved teaching the kids of Bailey, who are, you know, incredibly talented educators. They believe and they need a clear sense of communication, because they help build the change we are seeing at Bailey, and they need to feel that they will be a part of that change, and that boils down to literally, am I going to be able to have a job in a year? Is the budget going to change? Is the, so, I think the more decisive and bold we can be in our communications and honoring those who have been involved, including our families and students, I think then we can move forward and build something great. But I think decisive communication is now an urgent matter.
Mr. Pinkston.
What research is there that shows that moving Bailey into Stratford is actually going to result in improvement? And if there's research, and if it's kind of grounded, and there's basis for it, I think, you know, we need to have a little bit of time to talk about that and digest it before we make this kind of decision. So talk about the rationale.
So this is the committee's decision. What we know is that, you know, there really is probably no research that says a 512 school is the answer. It's what's inside of that, of that school. Being very purposeful about the developmental needs of middle schoolers, and building, you know, if we build a 512 campus, but being very mindful of that era of childhood, and what it takes to have an effective middle school. We do know that transitions are very, very difficult across the country, moving from middle into high school. So the stronger we can build an effective transition for children, the better it will be in their educational experience. So that research is in existence, that the tighter we can make those transitions, the better it is for students. So we can take a hold of those aspects of what we know works in schools as we build this model. But we have to, we have to look at what we know works, particularly in the era of transitioning students from middle school into high school and from elementary into middle. That's where we lose a lot of educational ground. And also, as we look at this, making sure we tend to the needs, the developmental needs of middle schoolers and high schoolers, which are different.
Madam Chair, I think what got us here to begin with was a lack of adequate community engagement. And what we're hearing from folks in East Nashville, including some people on the advisory committee, is that there's not quite the level of buy-in, and in fact, there's some level of resistance that's remaining. I feel like we might ought to take a couple of weeks just to figure out exactly what that looks like. If I heard Mr. Weber correctly, the year, one year out is the timeline that's necessary for making decisions. So in theory, you know, this could go as late as August, but I know nobody wants to do that. But I think taking a couple more weeks just to understand exactly what's going on here, how this is more than just sort of moving around that chair, so to speak, but actually could drive improvement for Bailey. That feels like a more responsible approach, given the fact that we've only had this stuff for the last 24 hours.
Anyone else?
I did have a question about the proposed transportation piece for the middle student, middle school students and the high school students. I would have some reservations of students, the younger group, traveling on the same bus and route, bus route than I would have for the high school students. Would there be separate transportation for those students?
Honestly, those are operational details that get ironed out. We've heard that through the community, and I would expect that we would work that into the transportation plans. There are, you know, how we use those buses, but I can't commit to you to say that we will run special buses for middle school students separate from high school students.
So, yeah. So what I would also suggest is that what's in this plan, if I'm not mistaken, is a what?
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
That we, or what we would like to get accomplished, the how, the implementation, I think is something this board would monitor throughout between now and the start of the school year where these things will go into place, is to require, even with every board meeting, or at least one meeting each month, or at least one meeting each month, that there is a presentation that shows for each one of these elements, where are we, what's the implementation plan, and where are we with, and how that's progressing, and what are the key decisions that need to be made? And those are fair questions, I just don't know that it's fair to expect the answers at this point. And so I think what the, the ask is, is this board willing to support what the committee has recommended needs to be done? And then the board fulfill, the other part of its responsibility is monitoring the implementation of that. Ms. Froe.
Just one comment, one question. Would it be possible, since Bailey has made such immense progress, to maintain not only the teaching staff, but also the administrators as they move to a new school? That's my comment, and I know we don't have to answer that tonight. My question is, does two weeks make a big difference to any of you as to if people are uncomfortable making the decision tonight?
The one question, and I see Mr. Murdock in the back of the room, the one question I would have specifically is about construction planning. I can't speak to know if there's technical aspects to the plans at Stratford, if any kind of delays would affect you there.
And I'll answer, you know, again, we, we said what's working at Bailey, we want to keep, you know, and I think the community is, is very fond of Dr. Sawyer. There's lots of teachers that apparently are high performing, and so, you know, what we said was keep what's working, and let's bring it over. And we do want it to be a school within a school, you know, and, and maybe that's something we would want to demand is the busing, you know, we need to figure out the busing. Like, just keep it as a small niche middle school inside the school. It's okay, we're leveraging this great asset that we're putting the $20 million into. It's going to be amazing with Vanderbilt-level laboratories and the STEM wing that we have. We want to leverage that asset, but we want a small middle school focused inside of this school, and we don't want the fifth graders ever seeing the 12th graders. At all. And at East, we know, you know, again, at East, it's 5 through 12, we got, what, 100% graduation? It's 5 through 12 school. There's, there is a wall, and let's just keep the wall at Stratford.
And a waitlist at East, which I feel is the big X-factor to create space to allow those people in.
If I could just share the actual recommendations I've been sharing with some of the people who've been asking me at this point, in order to really look at protecting the teacher leadership model, the advances in school culture that are irrefutably linked in the data. I highly recommend at this point that you, whoever you choose, you appoint a clear leader of this transition, and we begin moving forward and communicating clearly. We can have discussions about what it will look like, but we've got to move forward at this point. Secondly, we need to immediately outline what we value and feel needs to be protected in this transition, the core themes and effective practices. And then third, we need to look carefully at the current staffing at Bailey and have communications with them, as was discussed. I mean, I was a teacher for 10 years. Teachers are bonded to this understanding that they can continue their craft. They're linked to their students, and they're linked to this, the, the support and feeling of I'm going to continue my work that I've built. We owe it to the educators who've been working so hard to build the advances at Bailey, to have that kind of communication with them, and give them the assurances that they can keep building the change that they wish to see at Bailey. Those are my, my recommendations, if I were to give any.
Anyone else?
If I could speak to the question Chris asked about the construction schedule, it's, there's a very small amount of work required to facilitate the middle school coming into the Stratford building. We can do it at some other time between now and when the school might start. Our thought and our initial plans is to try to do it now while we have a contractor on site, and while everyone is fairly tolerant about all the inconvenience associated with the construction, to just go ahead and do it now and, and wrap it up. But it could be done at a future date.
How long is the contractor on site?
He'd be on site and finish up the high school part at Christmas of this year.
Ms. Hunter?
Yes, I would just like to commend Dr. Register for taking the charge and leadership on this process a couple of months ago. I was able to attend some of those meetings, and also, Elisa Kim, this was a very, very toxic situation initially, and it did not seem that we would ever get to a point where you had the community members and the community leaders and teachers and principals all working together to come up with a solution. So I'd like to say that I respect that, everything that you guys have done, and I'm actually quite impressed with the work that you've done. And I thank you, Dr. Register.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. No further questions, there's a motion on the floor to defer approval of the recommendations from the committee. All in favor of the deferral?
Now, the motion was to defer the decision on the pathways, which is not the entirety of the recommendations of the committee.
So you want to separate?
Well, I'm just going off of what's on the agenda. Like I said earlier, I think what should have been on the agenda is consideration of the East Nashville-
I see what you're saying.
-committee recommendations, so I'm reacting to that. So I'd like to make, to renew my motion for a two-week delay on the approval of the pathways, pending some additional community engagement, just to make sure that we're sure that we're sure.
So the motion is to defer approval of the committee, the pathway recommendations?
May I ask a question since the motion has been specified? May I ask a question?
I will allow you to make a question.
I know that teachers want to know what they're going to be doing next year, and your comments are very compelling, and I want to get this passed, and I think many of us do. Would two weeks, we would still be in school, will we in two weeks? Yeah. So would that work?
No, we won't. We have 10 more days of school. Is it 10 more days? That's what my daughter says.
Well, I mean-
It's 10 more, 10 more actual days.
She would know.
You know, the reality on the ground is that my, you know, we worked really hard to recruit this team, and we have lost, you know, some of our top leadership now. And we've had really a difficult time with recruiting, in some cases, as top candidates have heard about the uncertainty, and they want to move their families into certainty. But you know what, I have to say, the most compelling reason I'm here with this is when the scholars ask me, what's the future? They're starting to want answers too. And so I think I respect whatever you decide, if it's two more weeks of analysis, if that's the, you know, decision of this board. But on the ground, I think it's, we need to start moving forward decisively in order to keep the practices that are working in place.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to defer approval of the pathway recommendations contained in the report. A motion's been made, and there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's two, all opposed to deferring? I mean, yeah, okay, here we go. So it's not being, we're not deferring the decision on the pathways. Now, I need a motion to approve.
I move to approve the East Nashville plan as written.
Thank you, is there a second? Second. We have a, a motion to approve has been made, it's been properly second. All in favor of approving what?
Are we going to have discussion?
Oh, yeah, let's discuss it.
So what, what exactly are we moving to approve?
Approve of the pathways as they're recommended in the, in the presentation.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to accept and approve the entirety of the recommendations from the East Nashville Advisory Committee.
The entire?
I still have concerns about the Bailey thing, but I think if we're going to accept part of it, we ought to just go ahead and accept all of it.
May second. All in favor of accepting the entire packet of recommendations from the East Nashville Advisory Committee, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Ah, we got another motion, because Cory's going to look at me funny if I don't finish this. All in favor of only accepting the pathway recommendations, say aye. Don't say a word. All opposed? We're all opposed? No, okay, good, very good. All right, thank you very much. You get to where you have to go, thank you so much for your words, I appreciate your passion, thank you, Chris, thank you, Mr. Murdock. And item number second. SEIU motion, Amy.
I would like-
Hold on, let me turn your mic on, because, there we go.
I would like to amend my motion and ask that we-
You have to make one to amend it, now, you have a motion, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
You gave notice of a motion.
Okay, I gave notice of a motion. The motion I made was to terminate the appeal and the SEIU labor negotiations policy lawsuit.
So that's the motion. Is there a, is there a second?
A second.
Work with me here. Is there a second? Motion fails, make your next motion.
Okay. I would like to amend my motion that we direct Dr. Register to enter into settlement agreements with the SEIU about the labor negotiations policy lawsuit.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, that we, that Dr. Register enter into labor negotiations with the S E I-
No, settlement, settlement discussion.
Settlement discussion.
With the attorneys.
With the attorneys.
About the labor negotiations policy lawsuit.
Okay. Motion's been made and properly second, is there any discussion? Mr. Pinkston?
You know, it's become clear through a set of conversations that, that we have one, a grand total of one case on appeal in the school system right now, and it's, and it's this appeal. And I think just to kind of reset the conversation, this has been going on, the appeal has been going on really since July, when Chancellor Bonneman and Davidson County Chancery Court found and said that the Director of Schools does not have legal authority to revoke the labor negotiations policy under any statute charter provisions, Metro Charter provisions, or Board of Education policy review by the court. So we essentially lost at the Chancery Court level, and have been fighting an uphill battle on appeal since July of last year. So this has been going on for a year, there's no telling how much longer it could go on. And the fact that this is the only case we've got on appeal, and we routinely review and accept settlement offers, and make settlement offers, offers in other cases before they go to appeal, it seems logical that this might be, you know, an opportunity to just get everybody back around the table and have some discussions, and see if there's some common ground, and put an end to this litigation, which has been going on for several years. So I support the motion to enter into settlement negotiations. I would like to hear from Ms. Harkey about our attorney on what she thinks about it.
So as Ms. Harkey comes to the podium, I do need to ask a question before I say anything.
I think the, with the statement being made that we don't know how long it's going to go on, I think we did hear earlier that somewhere between two and a half and four months. I think if there's anything that I wouldn't know how long would go on, would be negotiations, which is where we started, trying to find some common ground, right? And I'm just saying it for background and statement of facts, not a position, but we did get some understanding of how long the appeals process, as it is, as it exists today, once the, and I'll let you explain further about that per Mr. Pinkston's request.
I think you were right in terms of what we heard earlier, in terms of how long the appeal process could go on till we get a decision. In terms of, I think what I'm hearing from Mr. Pinkston is, is really just whether or not this is something that, entering into settlement negotiations is something that we can do. I certainly am not aware of anything legally that would absolutely bar us from entering into settlement negotiations. I, I don't know how successful anything will be, but certainly there is no problem with at least starting that conversation to see what we can work out.
Ms. Dr. Brandon?
So my question would be, should we do this before the appeal is, the, the decision is rendered?
If the decision of the board is to go ahead and request that we at least approach the SEIU team to see if we can come up with any settlement agreement, we can certainly do that, even while the appeal is still pending.
I'm sorry, I delayed the room. I didn't hear the motion.
The motion was to direct Dr. Register to enter into negotiations with SEIU.
For the purpose of settling.
For the purpose of settling.
The lawsuit.
The lawsuit. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? You want to add some?
Kind of, the comments, since we were, since we were talking about what, what happened earlier, you know, I, I do think it's questionable whether it's two months or four months. I mean, litigation is notorious for dragging on for a long, long time, and this one's been going on for years now. The, there, it's clear also that there's been no meaningful attempt by either party to have a settlement conversation, which is what normally happens, apparently, in every other single piece of litigation that comes before the school system. And the other thing I would just say about this is, this is, you know, there's kind of two questions here. You know, there's the legal questions, kind of what's possible, could we win on appeal, could we not, you know? But then there's like the more fundamental question about what's the right thing to do for working men and women who support our teachers and, and our administrators and their efforts to support our kids. And it's pretty commonplace in America for employees to have a voice in the workplace, and I think that's fundamentally what this is about. I don't think that we necessarily are going to agree with every single thing they want, or vice versa, but I think getting back around the table and putting an end to what has been a protracted feud ought to be something that we, we should and could do, and we have another answer to that pretty quick. So that's my additional comment.
Ms. Shepherd?
Ms. Harkey. Previously, we were told that there were parts of this that were prohibited by state law?
It's not the same.
Is that the same thing that we're-
No. Well, I mean, so that's part of the, the appeals, the whole suit. I think this is something different. Will, Mr. Pinkston is asking for a conversation to happen, to see if we can find some common ground to then avoid needing to continue the appeals process. So not just dropping it, which- Ms. Froe, change your motion. Ms. Pierce?
Is there a time limit? I mean, is there, we, we direct Dr. Register to have these conversations, what does that look like? I mean, is there a, a time on that?
I don't have anything specific in mind, but my hope would be that we could resolve this and start fresh when we get a new director in place, so that this doesn't continue to drag out. And so that's my interest in bringing the motion.
So the motion is for the, to direct the director, whoever the director is, correct?
Yes, I mean, but, you know, I think sooner would be better, but I'm open to discussion on that, on that point.
Dr. Register?
Question for the, for the attorney and for Mr. Pinkston. Typically, when we've entered into settlement negotiations, wouldn't we've been in court? It's been the attorneys that have done that, that have led that process, the attorneys from both sides. And the question I have from Ms. Harkey, is that the common procedure, and does the motion expect that, or for me personally, to enter into negotiations on settlement?
The common practice is usually that attorneys communicate with each other to try to negotiate a settlement. Certainly, though, you know, we can bring in whoever we need to bring in pursuant to what the board decides to do, but yes, typical practice is that attorneys would negotiate with the, with the attorneys on the other side.
While the appeal is still in process, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. These negotiations certainly can happen while the appeal is still pending, yes.
I'd just like to say that we have so many people that work hand in hand with our children and our teachers on a daily basis, and I think they deserve to have at least an opportunity to sit down at the table with Dr. Register, with the attorneys, just like those children who are waiting and want to know what's going to happen in their lives within the next year. So I think these employees of Metro National Public Schools deserve the same rights.
All right. So, Mr. Pinkston, I'm going to ask that you restate the motion.
It's Ms. Froe's motion.
I'm sorry, Ms. Froe, I'm sorry.
I move that we direct Dr. Register as our, well, as our sole employee, the process of which would be determined as, as we typically handle settlement negotiations, to, to enter into settlement negotiations with the SEIU.
Mr. Pinkston?
Ma'am, I think state laws, we've discussed previously around the table, also gives us as a board the ability to have- as a board the ability to have, directly engage our legal counsel. So, I would suggest that, that the motion might be amended or restated to focus on metro legal.
I would like to amend my motion. I move that we direct our attorneys to enter to negotiate, settlement negotiations with the SEIU.
We're not discussing it any further. You've heard the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One? All right. The ayes have it. And we're going to move into consent agenda, Ms. Kim, and then Ms. Kim will carry the rest of the agenda.
All right. The approval of minutes, 210, 2015 and 224, 2015 regular meetings. B, recommended approval of supplement number one for Jolton Middle School additions and renovations, Edwards and Hotchkiss Architects, PC. C, recommended approval of request number eight for prototypical pre-kindergarten and kindergarten playgrounds at various schools. Waverly Belmont Elementary School, custom recreation. D, recommended approval of request number nine for prototypical pre-kindergarten and kindergarten playgrounds at various schools. New Overton Cluster Elementary School, custom recreation. E, awarding of purchases and contracts. One, Attainment Company, Inc. Two, Microsoft. Three, Nashville Entrepreneur Center. Four, University of Memphis. Five, Vanderbilt University. Six, Vanderbilt University Bill Wilkerson Center. F, recommended approval of lease amendment for Kip Nashville's use of the Ewing Park Building as Kip Academy Charter School. G, recommended approval of lease amendment for Lipscomb University's use of the Stokes Building. H, recommended approval of lease amendment for Lipscomb University's use of the parking lot at the Stokes Building. I, recommended approval of lease amendment for Pencil Foundation's use of space at the McCann Building. J, recommended approval of lease for Kip Nashville's use of space in Kirkpatrick Elementary School as Kip Academy Nashville Elementary Charter School. K, recommended approval of lease for Lead Public Schools' use of space in Neely's Bend Middle School as Neely's Bend Charter, College Prep Charter School. L, approval of compulsory attendance waiver. M, approval of special courses, audio production one, two, and three. Foundations of audio, AV production, and digital design, medical Spanish, medical sociology and anthropology, American Sign Language, one.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. Dr. Register, you are up.
Mad Vice Chair, members of the board, I'd like to ask Pete Cook with Mass Insight to come forward, and I'll do some introductions and then turn it over to Pete to do a presentation. As you know, um, earlier in the spring, I guess late winter, we engaged Mass Insight to do a study of, um, the turnaround strategies and particularly for priority schools and the way that we're organized in the central office to, uh, support turning around low performing schools. Mass Insight came with a good track record, and they've done this, done this work in a number of places effectively. Pete and Mass Insight took on a very challenging schedule. We really wanted to get this work done and some recommendations out for implementation in this budget. And as you'll recall in the budget process, we, we identified the I-zone and the way we're organized in central office for charter school oversight and for priority schools as we identified that as a placeholder, and that's in place. And so, this set of recommendations comes to inform us as an administration and the Board of Education on any recommendations for modification to improve our practice. So Pete, we want to thank you for the work that you've done, and we'll turn it over to you for a presentation now at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Register, and thank you for, uh, having me here tonight to, to share some of our findings from our district diagnostic, as we call it, which we've been engaged with over the past several weeks. Like Dr. Register said, uh, the objectives were basically to figure out ways, especially with the transition of I-zone schools, semi-I-zone schools, back to the priority schools. You know, how, how to make sure that the central office can best support those lowest performing schools in the district, build upon kind of the progress that have, that has already happened in some of these schools. And also, you know, identify areas in terms of around vision, strategy, and culture, the organizational structure, and just school management more generally, how to improve that to make sure that schools are getting the support they need, but in particular the lowest performing schools. We did this, as Dr. Register said, on an accelerated timeline. I still feel like we, we got through a lot of material, though. There was kind of four phases, the first being data analysis, which we went through a lot of performance data, organizational charts, staffing, et cetera. We had about thirty-five interviews or interview sessions with folks, twenty-two senior and mid-level staff in the, in the central office, three principals, and we did ten teacher focus groups. And those teacher focus groups were part of our kind of what we call a school readiness assessment at Witsit, Jerry Baxter, and Glencliff, where we kind of tried to get a, a handle on, at least from the ground level, what the support in the district is like. And then, the last part is kind of district benchmarking research, where we kind of, after identifying some of the challenges or areas for improvement, looked to other districts who have had a success in these areas to try to see what things we can adopt and adapt in kind of formulating our, our recommendations. So, Witsit, Jerry Baxter, and Glencliff were the three places where we did our school readiness assessments. It's just an outline of some of the districts that we look to when formulating some of our recommendations. And so, this is kind of the important part, which is the three main points, probably the three big takeaways that I think that Dr. Register and as well as I would like you guys to take away. The first is, generally speaking, when Mass Insight is, you know, when engaged by a district to partner with them, it means that the district is kind of in a sorry state of affairs, generally speaking. And so, the past several weeks has been a kind of refreshing for myself and my team because I think that a lot of, there's a lot of good things happening in Metro Nashville, and I think that, especially in terms of, you know, the central office, the support they're providing schools, the kind of, you know, there's been some really big changes in human capital. I think that those areas are all, you know, I think that the district has gotten, come a long way from where it was several years ago. The second thing is, is that the district's innovation zone schools have made progress in both in academics and school culture. And basically, what our recommendations, especially around like the structure in terms of some of those transitioning back to the priority schools, as well as, as just the broader kind of network structure that the district is adopting, is to adapt some of those lessons from some, some things that worked with innovation zone schools so that they, you know, so that we can build upon the progress that they've been made, that has been made already. By the way, feel free to interrupt me at any point. So, in terms of leadership and learning, some of the successes, definitely the, the district has kind of embraced a lot of innovations, especially around high school redesign and, you know, effective teaming, project-based learning, et cetera, that's being applied at the middle and elementary school levels. It's also allocated a lot of time to leadership development, which, and basically, you know, my experience is probably the one area that, you know, we don't do very well in public education. We usually focus on teachers, and the district has put a lot of effort into focusing on developing leaders at schools. Principals and teachers definitely have a wealth of data, almost overwhelming amount of data that they can use, and they have a great team here that can provide basically, you know, whatever kind of metrics that you, that they need, and that goes for folks in the central office, too. The district also seems like it's been pretty successful at, at kind of introducing these new instructional practices, but kind of taking them to scale. It's usually a huge challenge in a district as large as Metro Nashville, but there's been a lot of success in that. And the other thing I think that's pretty key, and this is tied into the network school structure, is that you all have given school leaders and their teams the flexibility to kind of adopt a lot of those things, too, and given them the autonomy to, to make some decisions at the school level, which I think is important. In terms of challenges, one of the things that we saw is that especially, and this is kind of anticipatory, especially with the transition back of some of the I-zone schools into the priority structure, making sure to focus on basic instructional practices and emphasizing those, in addition to the innovations that the district has embraced. Because at some of those schools, obviously, often unfortunately, lowest performing schools have some of the, you know, the teachers with the least experience, and I think that there's benefit in that. Teachers that we talked to expressed kind of more content-specific support, as well as kind of ongoing instructional coaching for school leaders in particular, to help them build their capacity in terms of, you know, them, then going, being instructional leaders and going in the classroom to support teachers. To, to their credit, because usually it goes the other way around, leadership and learning has focused on middle schools and high schools as, as opposed, and to a lesser extent on elementary schools, although that's now happening. And, you know, I think one of the things is, you know, make sure that that kind of shift in focus happens and goes down to the elementary schools. The other thing is that the, the plan necessarily about the priority school transition back, there's, there's been fraught with some nerves, obviously, because of the change. And, you know, sometimes I think communication has gotten crossed about that. And the last thing is, you know, Student Services operates separately from leadership and learning, and probably, you know, at least in terms of the attention span of, of school leaders sometimes gets, you know, kind of is bumped down a notch. And so, any way to do, to kind of fix that and make sure that those two teams are interfacing more effectively is, would be key. In terms of school management, as the district is transitioning to the network structure, of course, as would be expected, there have been bumps in the roads, especially in regard to the division of responsibilities between lead principals, which are, you know, principals who also have this kind of second responsibility of evaluating and supporting other schools, the executive lead principals above them, and the executive officers. You know, we heard from some folks and some lead principals that they're concerned about kind of finding a balance between supporting and evaluating those folks and kind of, you know, running the schools that, that they are over. The support also kind of varies by lead principal, and this is, again, like I said, with a new initiative, this is to be expected, but, you know, you want to make sure that there are kind of clear guidelines and everyone, the same expectations are set, both on behalf of the school leaders and, and the folks, and the lead principals, for what those responsibilities are. And so, there's been some variation in the level of support that lead principals have provided. The next thing is, the lead principal model, because they're often the direct contact, the ability of the central office to support the, those schools and those school leaders is very dependent upon those people sending that, those messages and communicating that up the chain of command. And so, they can be a bottleneck at some points, in some cases. And I guess the other school management challenge is that although leadership and learning certainly is using data and kind of, you know, looking at the overview of how schools are performing, whether that actually kind of translates down to interaction between principals and their managers is not always clear, and is probably inconsistent, at least is what we heard. Okay, human capital. I'll just try to speed up, I'm sorry. Human capital, I think there was a kind of near universal praise for the leaps and bounds that human capital has come, come over the past couple of years, especially since the reorganization and the shift from kind of focusing on your traditional HR functions to kind of, you know, launching, you know, recruitment strategies, talent strategies is, is, I think, drew praise from nearly everybody that we talked to. And in particular, its support and work with the innovation zone team was cited as something that was probably a model or something to aspire to in terms of just, you know, cross-departmental collaboration in the central office. Human Capital's also kind of adopted a data-driven approach to their recruitment policies, and also makes sure that they're drawing upon a, a number of pools when staffing schools, especially for teachers. Alter programs, traditional programs, local universities, and that is, you know, something that I think is, benefits everybody. The increased focus on recruitment has translated from, you know, significant jump in the number of applications from about seven thousand to twenty-one thousand, applications for various jobs in the district, and I think that's pretty big. And school-based evaluation practices, while still, you know, it's still being implemented, and I think a lot of districts across Tennessee are, are struggling with it, or at least encountering challenges with them, have improved, and I think that the, you know, the principals we talked to at least said that there's, they appreciated the support they were getting from human capital. Teacher recruitment challenges. Hard to staff positions, still hard to staff, probably not a surprise. Teacher vacancies, I think, you know, to a certain, some of this is, is probably, you know, to a certain extent true, some of it's kind of wishful thinking. I know that probably principals would love to know what their vacancies were going to be like beginning of the school year, but the early, you know, people have been asking for being able to forecast those vacancies and figuring out who they need so they can draw on the pools of teachers available earlier in the year. Also, there was some note about just bringing in people from the outside, that they wish that process was streamlined because there's a lot of competition out there for, for highly effective teachers. And this is something that the district has already begun to address, but, you know, we also heard that, you know, early signing agreements, locking people in so that those folks are not lost to other opportunities that they're offered, is something that we heard loud and clear from school leaders. Teacher retention. Clearly, there's been an increase in the number of teachers leaving the districts, are leaving the district, although the exact reasons for this aren't necessarily clear. Some people pointed to that high performers and folks are being drawn away by charter schools, but in reality, you know, that could really only account for a fraction in our estimation of, of, you know, the number who are leaving. Part of that is probably just demographics. I think that school districts across the country are seeing that, just with, as baby boomers are retiring, that there are people who are leaving the district. In any event, I think a better exiting process for teachers that are leaving the district probably puts you all in a better place in terms of determining what are kind of the root causes, because to a certain extent, it's speculation. And I think the other thing that we heard from, from, you know, teachers in particular was greater opportunities for career development within the district and within their schools. Teacher leadership opportunities, how they can be developed, you know, I think often it's, you're either a teacher or administrator, and there's two pathways, but I think the more that, you know, principals can provide teachers with opportunity for, for leadership, they'll retain more folks. The last kind of finding area is communication, and this isn't necessarily the communications team, it's more focused on just the district-to-school communication. This is something that every district, especially large district, struggles with. How do you make sure that there is a kind of a filter between all the demands that folks in the central office have to kind of catch what are the essentials and what are the not? Because right now, a lot of principals are feeling they're inundated with things. And also, making sure that if you're making, or if you're a central office department, you're making a request to principals, that the people who manage them and working with them directly, or most directly, are aware of those communications so they can kind of assist with those things. You know, like I kind of alluded to, there's competed demands often, and, you know, kind of common calendar or scheduling tool, and making sure that this, you know, the different schedules, programs, meetings, professional development opportunities being offered by the central office are kind of on a common schedule so that things don't overlap, there's not last-minute complications about them. I mean, I think that was probably, at least in terms of the administrators and teachers, something that we heard that was a, a big challenge. So, now just kind of turning to the I-zone, especially the transition to the priorities, that some of them transition to priority schools, just want to kind of give a quick recap of, you know, where, what's happened with, with the I-zone schools, at least with the ten that have kind of been in the I-zone the entire time. In terms of academics, eight out of ten of the schools have seen improvements in mathematics, some of the, four of those with double-digit gains during the time they've been in the, in the, in the I-zone. Reading language arts, on the other hand, has been mixed, and I think that as folks who are, you know, familiar with education. who are, you know, familiar with education know, this is kind of a challenge across districts, especially in large urban districts, the literacy and the instruction and how to do that well and consistently across schools is something that, I think, that we're still working on. In science, which is actually, this was one of the surprises, for me at least, because usually, in a turnaround-type situation, the focus becomes solely math and English, and so, science increasing in eight out of the 10 schools in the I-zone, and four of those schools, again, posting double-digit gains are something to be celebrated. Overall, I-zone schools have posted gains, nine out of the 10 have posted gains in two or more core subjects on TCAP last year, and seven of them posted gains in three or more. So, there has been progress in the I-zone schools. In terms of culture, which is, obviously, this one drives the academics to a certain extent, disciplinary incidents have declined in all 10 schools. And overall, there's been a 21% decline across the schools over the past three years. Suspensions have decreased in seven of the 10, and the number of suspensions has decreased overall by 33% between 2012 and so far this year, at least. And student attendance has stayed relatively stable, there was a couple, you know, small downticks, but now an uptick again. So, overall, I would say that the I-zone schools seem to be in a place, in terms, at least in terms of the school culture, in a better place than they were. So, that fact has kind of informed what our recommendations are, and our recommendations are to retain some aspects of support that the schools have been receiving over the past several years in the I-zone. I think probably the first, most important thing would be appointing a successful school turnaround leader as, to head kind of a new priority school network, head by an executive officer, that would be supported by two executive lead principals. And that executive officer should report to the chief academic officer, but also with a dotted line to the superintendent, because I think one of the things that's really important is that those priority schools remain a priority, but remain a priority for everybody on the executive team. And you do that by making sure that that's kind of, you know, having updates on what the priority schools are doing in executive team meetings, becomes a part of, you know, every meeting. And making sure that that kind of starts a conversation of, how can the rest of the team make sure that priority schools need where they need to go, or need to be, you know, sorry, making sure that the priority schools are the priority for everybody, and that other departments are doing what they need to do in order to make those schools successful. I would redefine the role of the executive lead principal in a few ways. One of them is to make them, make sure that the direct manager of those schools, and first of all, starting with them to create year-long plans, that are kind of guided by the district's overall plans, but also tied to the specific goals of the schools and their deficiencies. And then, holding them to those plans over the course of the year, through, you know, regular check-ins, making sure that they, you know, we have a plan in place, what are the progress in that plan, do we need to make mid-course corrections? And that should really drive what that school leader is doing over the course of the year, and it's the role of the executive lead principal to make sure that they're either pushing back on them when that needs to happen, but also, at the same time, if there are things that come up where they need support, that the executive lead principal either provides that support, or gets them that support. And the third would be to direct priority school support staff to address the needs of schools. So, you'll see there's some extra roles, some of which were in the I-zone, that we think were pretty effective and important, to make sure these schools are, you know, successful. And the last thing would be to unliken the innovation team right now, spinning off the charter schools, now that they've gotten to a size that's fairly large in the district, it seems most appropriate for them to be kind of a separate entity, and so, creating a new kind of unit that's led by an executive officer for charter schools. Next page. Other questions about any of this? All right. And the last thing, I'm sure you'll be happy to know, is our recommendations around the network structure. The original intent of the network structure, according to our conversations, was it, was to kind of create a professional learning community, like you would have in a school, but for a group of schools. And, you know, we recommend that the best way to refocus on that aim, which I think is a good one, is to kind of clarify in the roles of these three layers, which is the executive officers, the executive lead principals, and the lead principals. First of all, I would, you know, appoint an executive officer for the elementary, middle, and high school, in addition to the charter and priority school ones that I referenced on the last slide, to kind of coordinate, evaluate, and support the executive lead principals. The executive lead principals, under these changes, would actually become the managers and the people who are evaluating the principals, or the school leaders. So, they would work with the principals on the front end to establish goals and benchmarks, they'd check in on school performance over the course of the year, and they'd kind of marshal and direct resources to schools and, you know, and get support from other central office departments as needed. And then, the lead principals would transition from their current role, which is, which is kind of a valueative, to one where they are more of a mentorship and support role, where they are providing one-on-one support to principals, as requested by the executive lead principal. You know, they're somebody that maybe they serve as thought partners, and they kind of articulate shared needs that they're seeing in schools with the executive lead principal, with central office staff, as needed. But they're probably paying a small, they're not, they're not playing an evaluative role, and they're probably not as playing a large role in the day-to-day management of principals. So, that was a lot of information, and I just talked a whole lot, so I apologize for that, but is there any questions? Try to truncate it.
Can, can we? Is there any way that we, you could send us this information?
Absolutely.
Like I said, it was a lot to digest tonight.
No, it totally was.
And my allergies are acting up, so it's difficult for me to see either screen up there, so.
Okay, definitely.
If you could send that to us. And I did hear a lot of, a lot of great suggestions, and I really do appreciate it, because I could tell that y'all hit the ground running.
Yeah, well, we had to, but yeah. Dr. Register has a report, and I'm sure that.
Okay, that would be awesome, I would really appreciate that.
Totally.
Would it be possible with a report?
Emma, I don't know if that comes from Dr. Risher, you, when we get this, if we could see the current organizational chart as compared to what you're recommending?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I think that makes total sense.
I've got three questions, at least three questions, and I'll start with the easiest one. The three schools that you did the readiness assessments on, two of those are actually in my school board district, so I'd be really interested in learning more about exactly what you found in those two schools, Glencliff and Witsit, but how were those picked? Those are.
With conversation with Dr. Coverstone, Dr. Register, I mean, we wanted to look at the lowest performing schools, because we probably, I mean, that was really our charge, was to figure out how the district going forward can better support those schools. And so, you know, based on a certain number of conversations, between the three of us, we kind of landed on those schools, but it wasn't anything really beyond that, just that we wanted to obviously get folks that had been in the I-zone, that had, you know, originally been a low-performing school, to get a gauge of, you know, what folks say they're doing up here, is what, you know, to the, you know, what extent the folks on the ground level are, are kind of getting the support that the central office thinks they're giving, but also, what are these, oops, sorry, what are the pieces that they're missing? And what are the areas where there's still kind of need at the school level, so.
Second question I had revolves around school improvement grants, known in the education world as SIG. One of the things that troubled me about some of the early conversations last fall about new turnaround strategies was we seemed to be putting, you know, a heavy emphasis on school improvement grants as a way to get this done, and I know that the national thinking on SIG is pretty varied right now. Could you just talk a little bit about that, and how much eggs in the SIG basket we really should be putting versus not?
Well, I mean, I think, and this is totally opinion, and also, I mean, I have experience with this, but I'm definitely by any, not by any stretch of the imagination, a SIG expert. I think that probably the SIG program is one, was, is a great idea. I think that there was an expectation that districts would necessarily either have the capacity or resources to innovate, much more than actually happened. If you kind of look at kind of the different models that were adopted, a lot of districts that receive grant funding opted for kind of the easiest way out, which I think somewhat limited their capacity to turn around schools. You know, in terms of my feelings on, on whether we can, you know, totally, I think it's a, it's a good start. I think that, you know, the SIG funding is something that is there, it gives, you know, I think it's given at least Metro Nashville, it seems like, a lot of lessons to take away from the experience, especially with the innovation zone, that they didn't have, they didn't, we didn't have initially, in terms of, you know, what has worked, what hasn't worked, you know, the importance of making sure that you have, you know, really strong leaders in these schools. I think a lot of the work that, kind of I said it earlier, in terms of, you know, how human capital and the innovation team work together to make sure that, you know, when there was, when needs in terms of staffing, you know, that they had the opportunity to do that, and also, especially around bringing in, you know, qualified teachers and higher-performing teachers to work in those schools, those are things that would have never happened had this kind of, you know, all gotten kicked off with the SIG program. So, I think that there's that benefit, and this is, I mean, I think the big question, or at least the charge to you all, is to kind of build upon this experience, build upon the progress, and figure out how to take it to the next level, so that, you know, you can raise these lowest-performing schools.
And my third and last question is, if for a district that clearly is lacking turnaround capacity, what is the biggest lever that we can pull to fix that? I mean, is that, in your opinion, principal leadership, or, you know, what else?
Well, I would say that probably, at least in the structure that the district is adopting, the, well, for, I would say, on the, you know, central office end, it's the executive lead principals. Probably the most important person in that entire structure are the folks who are directly managing principals every single day. And they're going to schools, these should be, shouldn't be people who are sitting around a desk here in the central office, they should be, you know, meeting with principals, meeting with, you know, actually, meeting with school leadership teams, I should say, and kind of constantly serving as, you know, somebody who is both pushing, but also providing support to the schools, and everything kind of comes down to them in terms of leveraging all the resources and talents and knowledge in the central office, because they're really going to be the people who are directing it. In terms of the school level, you know, obviously, teachers are super important, but I think that we've found that, you know, school leaders are huge, and making sure that you have really important, really highly-performing school leaders is key, and can make a difference, mimic the difference between, you know, having a staff that is underutilized and hasn't actually, you know, realized its own potential. I think it, you know, it's the person who can identify, you know, who are the bad apples, who needs to stay, who needs to go, the people who kind of inspire the rest of the staff and set the tone for the year, so, in many respects, and, you know, a highly-effective principal is somebody who not only does all of those things, but is also an instructional leader. And so, they're in classrooms every day, they're giving feedback, and if they don't know how to fix things in the classroom, they're going to find somebody who can tell them how to do it. And so, obviously, the school leaders are super important.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Others? Any comments, or you want to wrap us up?
Yes, I'll just say that I think Pete and his staff have given us a lot to think about, and the conversations we've had, just in the few days that we've had an opportunity to be together after the reports finished, has been very productive, and will continue that, and I think can take the recommendations and learn from them, and make adjustments in what we're doing to be more effective, and would look, look for, and there are some changes in structure, and we've, we, I don't think they're cost-neutral, but I don't think they're terribly expensive either. And I think one thing that I recognize is that as the number of charter schools in our district and the oversight grew, and as our priority schools and turnaround schools, the number of those grew, we didn't keep pace with that. And when Pete's talking about executive lead principals, for those priority schools, it means providing a greater level of supervision. I don't know if supervision's the right word or not, because we really want the school, school leaders making decisions, but it's a support system. And to give them a support system that's much, much closer to where the action is, and I think, and I do think we'll be able to respond to that with the SIG grants, Julie McCargill's working on that now, and is a pro at it, I might say, that we anticipate about a million dollars in additional funding for SIG grants to apply directly to these schools in the structure that we create. So, I think we can do that in short order. I appreciate what Pete said about school leadership, and as you know, we've hired a number, we've, we've made decisions about all priority schools, about the leadership in the school. We've made decisions that people can do the job and left them there, or if we, if we felt like they cannot do the job, we've made changes. And most of those people are already on board, which is, which is something I think that's really important, when you take their most important job of staffing their schools to completion, it's got to be done right now, it should have been done earlier, we've done some of it, and we've brought them on early to do that, so I think, I think we're moving in the right direction. It's a heavy lift, though, to turn around schools is a heavy lift, and I want to say, I think Mass Insights done a nice job of giving us a critical outside view of what we're doing and what we need to improve. The other thing that Pete didn't get into tonight, just in the interest of time, that I think's really important, is they have a good national view of where best practice exists, and have, they have made some very specific recommendations to us about, about best practices, where we can go to look at what's going on in, in other districts to really improve that practice, and so, we look forward to working with them to talk about that and to learn from that. So, Pete, thank you for doing the work.
Thanks, sir.
And we'll continue on with it expeditiously.
Great, thank you, Dr. Register. There are no community reports, so we'll move to announcements, and I'm going to start on that end with you, Tase. Dr. Brennan?
Yes, I'd just like to highlight the Teachers of the Year in District Two. At Cole, Brielle Confer; at Creve Hall, Lina Schwartz; at Granberry, Jamie Gorman; at Haywood, Elizabeth Colan; at McMurray, Ashimi Senya; at Oliver Middle, Shannon Gordon; at Overton, Melissa Ren; at Shane, Anna Watkins; and at Tuscalum, Lisa Whitehead. Now, I know that all of the schools are ours, but I did want to mention those honorees, and we're proud of all of the honorees. Pass it around.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan.
Yes, thank you. Last week, Dr. Register, Dr. Tony Majors, and Dottie Kritchlow, and several staff members attended the SEL Social Emotional Learning Event in Cleveland, Ohio. Seven cities were represented for, are very involved in developing and furthering the social and emotional aspects of the whole child. With such. With such emphasis on high-stakes testing since the enactment of No Talent Behind, SEL helps to bring back a balance to the classroom. Dr. Register was recognized and honored for the work that he has accomplished with SEL and his commitment in this work for the last three years. Our Strategic Plan Education 2018 Excellence for Every Student is embedded with aspects of personalized learning. Our strategic plan was touted as the best in the country, and Dr. Register was given a beautiful plaque and sincere words of appreciation by the people who were leading the conference. Thank you, Dr. Register. TEL survey scores are back. Congratulations to Hunter's Lane, which has scores that surpass district averages. Congratulations to the faculty and the principal, Dr. Sue Kessler. Last night, we celebrated Teacher of the Year, and it was a lot of fun at the banquet at Lipscomb University. Congratulations to all the teachers who were elected by their peers for this honor. District-wide Teachers of the Year were chosen by a committee of teachers and principals and administrators. The Elementary Teacher of the Year for the entire district was Diane Winstead of Old Center Elementary, with 26 years of experience. Middle School Teacher of the Year was from Bailey, Sam Magnet. Whitney Bradley, with five years of experience. And our High School Teacher of the Year is from Antioch, Tiffany Sherrill, with 11 years of experience. But I could hardly contain myself, because all three principals of the year were from my district. Patty Yon is the Elementary Principal of the Year. Tracy Bruno, the Middle School Principal of the Year at Litton Middle. And Dr. Sue Kessler from Hunter's Lane. Madison and Engelwood were well represented. What a night. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd?
Thank you. First of all, last week, it was announced that Metro Schools and Music Bakers was awarded a $100,000 grant from the National Endowment of the Arts, and so I want to say a special thank you to Dr. Nola Jones and to Lori Shell for their insistent work in, in making sure that our, all of our children have a musical experience and, or an arts experience in school, because we know how important that is for our students. So thank you to them for going after that. This coming Thursday night, McGavick High School Coster Coalition will be awarding scholarships to 76 McGavick High School students. These are $500 scholarships, and so this is a $35,000 spend. So these students, some of the students that were here, the valedictorian from McGavick High School who was here tonight, will, will be receiving one of those awards. So we've grown. Last year, it was 46, so this year, 76, so we're growing. So the kids are catching on, and more so probably the parents are catching on that this money is available to them. So kudos to all those young men and women who are receiving this, these awards. Also, this coming Thursday will be the Donaldson-Hermitage Chamber of Commerce Education Day Luncheon. And so we have expanded our schools. We are now doing the middle school and high school for Tennessee School of the Blind. And finally, I got them to add the Academy at Opry Mills, so we'll be including them in the recognition of those honors too. And I want to say congratulations to all the teachers in MOPS, because they're all rock stars, and last night was, it was a special occasion. And so our math teacher from McGavick High School was runner-up for Teacher of the Year. She has been teaching math at McGavick High School for as long as I can remember. Her name is Martha Mitchell, and she's the consummate teacher, not just math teacher, but consummate teacher. So I know all of us have been busy this month attending concerts and choral shows and graduations and senior awards and everything, so it's a, it's a busy time of the year, but it's also a very rewarding and fun time of the year.
Thank you. Ms. Penney?
Yeah, just wanted to key off of something that we did earlier tonight. On, you know, the Bailey decision, we essentially closed a school with that vote, and, you know, I'm, I'm okay with making tough decisions, but I would just hope that as a group, we can get out of this just-in-time decision-making mode, where information comes at the last minute, and there's not a lot of time to process it, and, and it's kind of arbitrary. I mean, I think that this decision with Bailey, there's really no evidence that that's actually going to improve academics in the area. So I just would hope that we can spend more time, and particularly as we get downfield in the director search, really make timely, comprehensive providing of information to the board a priority for the next director of schools. I feel like that will make us function better as a group. On a high note, I want to congratulate Joanna Guerrero and the staff, Lisa Wiltshire and the staff at, at the Casa Azafraan Early Childhood Learning Center, Early Learning Center. That's one of our new model pre-K centers. They had a significant number of kids in the first cohort come in who were either non-verbal or non-English, and those numbers have been dramatically reduced, meaning there's going to be a lot of four-year-olds, soon-to-be five-year-olds, who are going to be going into kindergarten, ready to learn, verbal in, in the language, and hitting the ground running. So that, the early signs of the pre-K initiative is really, really good, and I hope that we can get around the table with the next mayor, while he or she is still a candidate, and get some firm commitments from them on supporting the ongoing expansion of the pre-K initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Penney?
I just want to announce that J.T. Moore just recently dedicated their new greenhouse that they won through the Bridgestones Rethink Green Competition this time last year. That's an exciting project over there for them. And this week is the arts at the elementary schools and at Harris Hillman. So Julia Green is putting on Disney's Jungle Book tomorrow, Thursday and Friday at 6:30. And Aiken is doing Aristocat, so it's tonight, tomorrow, and Thursday, both all at 6:30. And Harris Hillman is also putting on Jungle Book, and their show will be tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning and again at 12:30.
Great, thank you.
I have a few announcements tonight. First of all, a couple of upcoming events. Hillwood High School is going to have an art showcase for its Academy of Art Design and Communication tomorrow night, Wednesday, May 13th, from 5:00 to 8:00 at 680 Rundle Avenue. And I'm sure the students would love folks to come and see their good work. Also, we are going to be having a community meeting in my district, District Nine, on May 28th at 6:00 PM at Westmead Elementary about the exciting possibility of a new elementary school. All of our schools in my district, all of our elementary schools in our district are overcapacity and have wait lists, so this is an exciting prospect. And then to follow up with some of the arts comments that already made, I want to congratulate Hillsborough High School, their Hillsborough players did a production of Hairspray, and they garnered 13 nominations and five wins at the Nashville High School Musical Theater Awards this past weekend. Gower Elementary is also, in my district, is also performing the Jungle Book as part of the Disney's Musicals in School Program. They're actually performing it tonight, so unfortunately, we're having to miss it. But there have been 23 schools that have participated in this program thus far, and at the very end of their, the end of their performances at their school, they get to perform at TCAP, which is pretty exciting for these little guys. Couple, a couple more. We, one of our teachers, Michelle Sheriff at Gower Elementary, was named a TEA Distinguished Educator for 2015. She is only one of nine in the state, and I know that she is excellent because she taught my daughter in fourth grade, so I want to congratulate her. And then finally, Homework Hotline is receiving the 2015 TEA Friend of Education Award, which this board received a couple of years ago. They're doing some excellent work, and wanted to congratulate them as well. That's it.
Thank you.
And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.